David Lyons. All right. Hey, Mark. There you go there, Mark. It's good to hear. Fred, we got Fred Townsend and looks like a good showing today.
Not much else to do today, Mike.
Yeah, it's all raining. Exactly. That's a perfect, uh, perfect time to have a meeting. I guess we, uh, hit it good. So, uh, there's Marty. Hey, Ashley, I guess we can go ahead and get started. Um, are we okay? Or should we wait for, uh, your okay or thumbs up with the feed?
YouTube now.
I'm sorry, what's that?
We are live on YouTube now.
Okay, great. All right. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The, uh, the meeting today for the Dewey Beach Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we had posted, uh, the notice properly. It's a public, uh, hearing. And, uh, we, uh, have been working on this table two, uh, ordinance. And, um, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and, uh, do, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance and then a roll call. So, uh, let's go ahead and get started. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Due to republic.
What stands?
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. Um, let's go ahead and we'll do a roll call. Uh, I'm Mike Harmer, um, here. Um, uh, go ahead, Jim, Jim Beliki, you're here.
Yes, present.
All right, Rick Judge.
Right here.
Dave Lyons.
Present.
Mark Norquist.
Present.
Jimmy O'Connor.
Present.
And Marty Six.
Here, present.
All right, we've got everybody here. Uh, we've got a couple, uh, town commissioners, uh, in attendance, uh, Commissioner Jazinski and Perthinger, along with, uh, Fred Townsend, the town attorney in Siskiyou. And, um, Ashley is helping us, Ashley Hudson's helping us with, uh, run the show. So without any further ado, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, look at the agenda that we posted. And I'd like somebody, uh, if they were okay with it, to, uh, a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt agenda as is.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, seconded by somebody?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Uh, I don't hear any nays, so, uh, passes unanimously there, Marty?
Yeah, yes.
Good, Marty. You'd sent some meeting minutes.
I'm taking notes. I'm taking notes here. I'm taking notes here. But, uh, what did you ask me?
Uh, basically, I guess you got the, uh, everybody who, you got the roll call and you got everybody who voted for the, uh, adoption of the agenda, which is everyone. All of us are here. We all voted.
Got it.
And now we're gonna, uh, uh, look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes that you had sent out. Motion to approve the minutes.
Um, I do have one, uh, change for the minutes.
Okay, well, let's, let's get, uh, what, uh, go ahead. I guess you can do it that way. What's your change?
Just one change, one correction on, on the, um, we noted the number of comments received in writing. So the number listed is thirty-three. There are actually forty-six that were received. So that would be the only adjustment.
All right, okay, good.
So with the friendly amendment, uh, looking for a motion to adopt with the friendly amendment of the number of, uh, comments, public comments, uh, can we get a motion on that?
I make a motion to adopt the change.
Take a second for someone?
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I don't hear any nays, so passes unanimously there, Marty. All right, so we got, got the business part taken care of. Now, usually what we do is we do a discussion amongst the planning and zoning commissioners about the draft ordinance for FARs and changes to, to use, uh, square footages for construction permitting, setbacks and other code issues in Table Two. The planning and zoning has been researching, discussing and considering for code changes specifically to Table Two of the Town Code in Chapter one eighty-five A. This was assigned to the planning and zoning commissioners based upon recommendations in the comprehensive, in, in of the, uh, comprehensive land use plan for the town of Dewey Beach and to make permitting simpler for the staff. Um, so, um, we have a, uh, there was a draft ordinance that we drafted up, then we heard some comments, so we, uh, made some changes to that, some minor changes, but that doesn't preclude any changes to the, uh, to the revision that, uh, was posted. So what we'll do today is we'll go off of the revised, uh, you know, the revised ordinance that was posted. And I'm thinking if Rick Judge, um, what we'll do is we'll each commissioner, we'll each have, you know, just have a discussion and then we'll open it up for the public hearing and we'll keep the, uh, we'll keep the, we'll keep the, uh, public hearing or the commissioner's, uh, discussion open for, for dialogue purposes. And, um, to start with though, uh, if we could get Rick Judge to run through, uh, his scenario of, uh, his assessment of, uh, or, or just, you know, detailed, uh, listing of each one of the changes, so we can just get them all out on the table. And then we can go ahead and have a discussion if we want to change some things, uh, based upon additional public comment and past, past public comment that we've heard. Then we hear some more public comment and it will close, close the public hearing and we can deliberate and decide if we want to, uh, send the recommendation forward to the town commissioners for them to consider or if we need to do additional work. So if you're willing, Rick, we'll put you on the spot. If you're not, we'll, uh, figure out another path for you. Are you, are you up for it there, Rick?
I'll give it, I'll give it a go to a start. I think first of all, before we even start, we need to let anyone who is, uh, joining the Zoom meeting realize that this has been an ongoing, uh, process with open meetings and public workshops for almost two years now. And we've come a long way. We've done a lot of research. We've had a lot of feedback. A lot of this, this ordinance was put together from the public workshop of May two thousand and nineteen. We have fine tuned it ever since. I don't know whether you want me to address some of the public comments or summation of, of those comments. I, Dave saw more than I did. I had forty-three, had forty-six, but they were, it was a good public, uh, comment period. Many of them were positive, some were negative, some were misinformed, some were just questions, but, um, we were charged back in the beginning to look at Section five-one of the comprehensive plan to be reviewed and to consider the need for modifications to the maximum building size in all zoning districts from what is permitted by current, current code in order to simplify the way maximum building size is defined and regulated. Unify how requirements are applied to various architectural elements. I think we have accomplished that. We just need to find tune the numbers to make sure everyone is on board, that it's a positive approach, that we are in fact trying to be fair and to maintain the character of these residential districts. That said, we have an ordinance that, uh, we went through the last meeting and we've made some slight changes to it. And really the changes are, are very small, but let's go through the immediate changes. And then if we want to discuss some of the public comment, I know a lot of the letters that came in said they could not participate in the Zoom meeting, so we need to give them recognition and at least that may be an answer to their questions or, or points. In Section One, the first section, which is the maximum building height thirty-five feet, we made no changes in there except removing the last two lines, which is all above ground deck railing must be the higher of forty-two inches above the deck surface or in compliance with the most current town building code. And the only reason that's been suggested to be eliminated, it's, it's just a part of our building code. It's like adding in here somewhere that our studs need to be on sixteen inch centers. There are a million little parts of building that are covered by the building code and we didn't feel this was, um, necessary to be in our table two. And then the same line is at the end of Paragraph Two, uh, all above ground deck railing. It's, it's a minor elimination, but it's a redundancy to the building code. Whatever the building code requires for deck railings is what people have to adhere to. And the next section.
Hold on, Rick. Also, uh, you're, we, I think we struck out two and a half stories, uh, and went to three stories.
Well, we, we did, but that was part of the, I was only going over the changes to the ordinance that we had last meeting.
Yes, exactly.
But there are a lot of changes. We, these are the changes to the changes.
Yeah, okay, changes to the changes. Okay, that clarifies that. Thank you.
We're, we're maintaining still the, the three roof decks not permitted. The roof pitch of four twelve, those are, if you want me to go through all of the changes, I'm happy to do that. I thought you were just asking for the changes to the changes.
Um, well, uh, it may be good to, uh, just review, you know, the original, the original proposal and then the changes.
Okay, very good. All right, well, we added in here that the maximum building height being thirty-five feet, which it has been since the beginning of our zoning code, but we didn't have a direct in writing description of how that thirty-five foot is, is measured. So we added the crown of the roadway abutting the property. Then we changed the maximum number of stories from two and a half, which was a new change, maybe two thousand and seven, when the comprehensive plan was brought out. And we did that with the intention of making the homes look smaller, even though they could still build to the thirty-five foot height. When five, seven years later, we look at the new structures to the lay eye or even the professional eye, the building officials had difficulty enforcing what a two and a half story is compared to a three story within the thirty-five foot height. Basically, we can't tell the difference between a three story and a two and a half story. So for building simplicity, which is what we were tasked to do, we decided to go back to the three story. Doesn't change the square footage, doesn't change the height, doesn't change the setbacks. It simply simplifies the enforcement code.
Thank you.
Then roof decks used to be permitted. We've had the feedback that roof decks in the residential neighborhoods are an invasion of privacy and a noise factor for rental units. And it was a distraction that people in the single family residential district did not want to have continue. So we eliminated roof decks and prohibited them in the NR district. Um, we added a roof pitch of four twelve, which kind of took over from having flat roofs and rooftop decks to give me more character. It was, it was a combination of concessions between the half story and the roof decks. So you still have a roof pitch minimum. You can't have a rooftop deck or a flat roof. And that was an addition that's received pretty good response in the, in the public comments. And then what we just discussed, which hadn't been xed out in the final draft was, as I mentioned before, the above deck railing is to be removed since it's part of the, the, uh, building enforcement code.
So, so this draft should show, Rick, that that line is struck, right?
Correct.
That's likely to be the proposal of the planning commission to the commissioners is that this line.
I mean, it's all on the table for discussion, but
Right.
for this, for this ordinance, we had struck that.
Thank you.
And then the same restrictions apply to buildings in the special flood district. No roof, um, decks, three stories, the above ground deck railing and the roof pitch remain the same. So it's basically same criteria for the special flood hazard as for the, uh, non-special flood hazard. Any questions on the, um, first section, Section One?
Hey, Rick, I just had one. In the previous, um, in the previous, uh, table, would roof decks have been counted in the square footage?
I do not believe so, but I, I would have to go back to Table Two on that, which I have here. No, open decks and roof decks, passenger elevators and private garages not included in the FAR calculation.
Thank you.
All right, Section Two, this is the minimum setback requirements for the side yard abutting a side street. We've had a lot of input on this, both positive and negative. We had decided that since our neighbors in Rehoboth and Lewis, Rehoboth being a ten-foot side yard setback on the abutting street, Lewis with an eight-foot setback on an abutting street, Dewey with a fifteen-foot setback on an abutting street, that we were a little bit extreme in terms of a, uh, a setback for these. It's a small number of properties compared to the entire NR district. So we had suggested changing that from fifteen to twelve. And at our last meeting, we decided that ten would be better than twelve. In any event, we had, as a group, just decided to take some of that setback, extra setback away, twelve, ten on the new, um, ordinance before me, it's at ten. That's open for our discussion today as well.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, I don't know if this, uh, I had asked, um, if the, uh, kind of, um, easements we saw on, um, was that, uh, King, uh, King Edward Street were the same as on Bayard Avenue. In other words, do, if we were to, if we were to adopt the ten feet, uh, and all of the, um, corner lots, uh, would that adversely affect or did, uh, did you look at that, Rich, and what the effect would be on Bayard Avenue?
I did.
What, what did you see there? Is it?
It is almost exactly the same as Bayard Avenue. It's, it's like forty-one feet from the paved surface to the, um, the setback line. And, you know, it, it's actually, it's, it's a lot more open space between the side yard and the abutting street than any interior lot, house to house, which would be sixteen feet, eight and eight. So if we took it to ten, there would still be thirty-some feet between, uh, the roadway and the property line.
Okay, so that.
The way I, I read the, uh, the, uh, comments that were sent in and doing a visual myself, um, on the streets. There is a lot of vegetation. There's been some misnomers in the public comments that reducing the setbacks on a, a side yard, uh, lot would be invading public space. Uh, it would not involve public space whatsoever. It's, it's a matter of using an extra, um, three, four feet of the private property for buildable area. It would make them still smaller than any other allowable building size in the NR district. Because they have an eight-foot setback on both sides. If we want ten or twelve on the side yard abutting a side street, it would still be a smaller, um, structure than a normal lot.
All right, okay, good. Uh, yeah, Rich, I appreciate you looking into that. I, I just didn't have a sense of, um, you know, if there was some consequences there that we weren't anticipating or, uh, didn't think about, but I appreciate you looking into it. I, that sounds reasonable.
Even if they expand, even if they expand the roads, widen the roads or put sidewalks in, uh, I think compared to Rehoboth, which has sidewalks, we're still well under, uh, or well within, uh, the, the larger of the setbacks for a side yard abutting a side street.
Yeah, great, great. Thanks.
I, I agree. Eric, one question, one following question. Any thought to, um, to detailing where the entrance for a, a corner lot would be, whether it would be off, uh, uh, Bayard or, um, Charles or St. Louis?
There, we don't have much say. Well, we do on, on our streets, but if they were to make a highway, a driveway off of King Charles, which is a state street, they'd have to have a state highway permit for ingress, egress. And that would be difficult to get. If you're on a corner lot on Bayard Avenue, you could even have two driveways, two ten-foot driveways, one on Bayard, one on your Carolina, Chesapeake, whatever street you're on. By our code, by our code.
Okay.
Which works on some lots.
Right, right, okay.
Is, is there, uh, any, uh, determinant or anything that would come into play if somebody oriented their house to face the front of their house to what you're calling the side street as opposed to, you know, the way all the other houses are oriented?
Yes, we, we addressed that in this, this ordinance that, um, the, let me see where it says. Read somewhere in here, it says that the front yard would be the shorter of the two yards.
Okay, I didn't see that. Okay.
That is.
I'm looking for it. I don't see it, but I know we, we put that in somewhere.
Are there, are there any of the streets that are oriented with the side, the shortest, uh, side of the property facing a Bayard or King Charles?
Actually, there might be.
So how, okay, so I don't know how that would affect those houses.
Well, it's your setbacks that we're talking, not the, uh, the driveway.
Oh, right, yeah. And I understand setbacks. People look at, I was, I always look at front yard as synonymous with street yard. And I know you guys don't look at it that way. That's why I'm asking.
When you have two straight yards, you're right, there is a, uh, a gray area. And I thought maybe it's in a different district or different, uh, paragraph that we stipulated that the front yard would be the shorter of the two yards.
So technically then someone could, oh, if, if, if the shorter line faces one of those, like, King Charles or Bayard, they could then turn their house so that they're only ten feet off of whatever the, the other adjoining street is?
Well, the front yard would be the, uh, the short one. So yes, if their, if their side yard was on King Charles, it would be a ten-foot setback.
So they, so they, but no, on the, on one of the sides, uh, she's there, not those two main streets. They'd be sticking out a lot closer than any of the other streets then. Cause that would now be their side yard.
Well, most side yards are eight feet.
Okay, I'm saying if it went to ten feet as you're proposing.
Yeah, so.
I, I'm probably not explaining it too well.
Yeah, you're on something. If the, let's, let's say it this way. If we were to say, let's take the setback on the, um, to, let's say it was, um, we use ten feet. Right now would be ten feet, the side yard would be ten feet. Um, if right now the front setback on the street is eighteen feet, right, from the street to the front of the house is eighteen feet?
Right.
So I guess the question would be, if we made the side yard on a corner lot eight feet, the way we stated it, I believe, the shorter, the closest to the street would now be considered the front. So the eight-foot setback, which is what Jim's trying to get to, would actually be now on St. Charles or on Bayard if we went with the, the shorter, you know, the, the lesser of the distance, the eight-foot distance. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't make a change to the corner lot setback. I just am looking for, is there some way of specifying what the entrance is into a corner lot? Jim, does that, does that capture what you were trying to say?
I, I don't think so. Not quite. It's a little hard to explain just talking about without, you know, sketching it out. But, um, go ahead, I'm, I'm, I'm following.
Let me pull out a map of Dewey Beach and, and know whether we have any fifty-foot frontages on King Charles.
Right, now that's where I was getting at. Cause then on that, whatever those side streets would be.
We do.
That's their side yard? Yeah, like on this, this, I don't know which way this lots can figure.
All right, on, on Chesapeake Street, there are two lots on King, or King Charles that are fifty-foot facing King Charles and a hundred feet deep.
Right.
They are an anomaly. There's actually two more of them. All the rest have the hundred foot on, uh, King Charles.
So based on that, then.
You want Chesapeake second block and two on St. Louis Street, uh, uh, second block. All the rest are a hundred foot. So there are some that, you're right, Jim, would have a front yard on King Charles, but that would be an eighteen-foot setback from King Charles.
Right, so potentially.
Presently, presently, the, the corner lots on King Charles that are fifty by a hundred with a hundred on King Charles have a fifteen-foot setback. We're talking about reducing that to a ten.
Right, and I'm just saying.
We still have a thirty-some foot separation from surface of road to side or to, uh, property line.
I, I just didn't want you to inadvertently end up saying like on a side street, I'll call Carolina, you've now made that the side yard and they can build off of that right away as opposed to what they're already held to.
Mm-hmm. I, I, I think that it's a detriment to, uh, switch your, your setbacks for the longer side being the, uh, uh, more restricted.
Right.
That would be eighteen foot off of the road for you, for the major, major part of your home. You can build a seventy-five or seventy-foot deep home and a thirty-four foot wide home.
Exactly.
The thirty-four foot is the smaller setback. You, you've lost, um, user, considerable user space.
Yeah, I just don't want an unintended consequence by not thinking.
We, we gotta think all this through. There, there's a lot of other possibilities we have not considered and thanks for that. And I'm not sure the, uh, absolute answer. I think it is to the detriment of the, uh, property owner to use the longer side as the, uh, bigger setback though.
It would be.
All right. Moving on to Section Four?
Sure.
Yeah.
Floor area ratio. We have, this is a, basically a brand new, um, section from going from the, uh, FAR with a one point zero in the neighborhood residential to a, uh, a square footage maximum criteria. And what we did for anything, the reason it's less than seventy-five hundred square feet is to make a lot that might be a little bit larger than the normal five thousand square foot fall into the same category as the five thousand. Once you get to seventy-five hundred, you basically have a lot and a half. So seventy-five hundred and bigger has one criteria, seventy-five hundred or less than seventy-five hundred has another criteria. And for the less than a lot and a half, maximum square footage of any single family home shall be forty-five hundred square feet. And the important thing here is the forty-five hundred square foot limitation shall be calculated by determining the total area above grade and under roof with a headroom of six foot or greater. That includes your porches, under roof, your garages. Everything above grade, under roof is included. Right now, with the one point zero FAR, you're allowed to build up to a five thousand square foot home without the inclusion of rooftop decks, garages. Uh, basically the garage is, is the big link here. A normal garage is five fifty to six hundred and twenty-five square feet. So by reducing the total maximum bill to forty-five hundred, you're basically taking a twenty percent reduction from what is allowed at present or a point eight FAR, but we're not going to use FAR anymore. We're simply going to use the maximum square footage for simplicity and enforcing the building code. The reason everything under roof is now included or suggested to be included is a covered porch could become an enclosed room. A garage that is intended as a garage two years from now can become two bedrooms, a game room, a livable living space. Therefore, under roof, it's part of your calculation. What you want to do under that roof is up to you. And then to be fair, but also to be conservative, that you cannot build a basic boutique hotel because you own several lots, we limited lot and a half or larger. For lots of seventy-five square, hundred square foot or greater, maximum square footage shall be fifty-two hundred square feet as calculated above. In other words, if you own three lots, you can't build a fifteen thousand square foot home. Now, I've had comments from people that say, why would you not want to have one large home as opposed to three homes stuck together? And that's a point of view. I think a large home with a dozen bedrooms sounds like it could be a, uh, an extreme rental, which in a residential neighborhood, we encourage rentals, but not maximum occupancy of that, that nature. So I stick with staying with the fifty-two hundred square feet as a, uh, a maximum bill for any single family structure. Now, if you have three lots, you can build one fifty-two hundred square foot house and one forty-five hundred square foot house. But if you're going to merge them all together, the largest single family dwelling that's capable under this proposal is five thousand two hundred square feet. We also added two important additions, both in the five thousand, under seventy-five hundred, six bedroom max, under the seventy-five hundred, eight bedroom max. We're trying to be fair to a large family, to a good rental property without over occupancy and, and a noise factor in a residential district.
So, um, to summarize what I, my sense is that, um, we have some houses in the, in our district that have been, uh, maybe complaints about because they look so huge, but they were consistent with the, the previous zoning at five thousand square feet. Now we're asking, or, or proposing a forty-five hundred. So that's a, whatever that is, ten percent reduction or, or so, and, uh, you know, that's going in the right direction. I mean, that's what I see as, um, uh, you know, a, a more restrictive, but it's certainly, certainly not, um, as draconian as we could, we could imagine. as draconian as we could, we could imagine if we looked at, um, FARs and, and Rehoboth and so forth that are down to point six or point seven, something like that. That's kind of my summary of, of, of that, uh, section four.
But, but Marty, you have to take note that we're including garages, covered porches, and, uh, you're actually using it's more of a 20% reduction from what we have. Now, there have been, I, I have a study of 14 homes that have been constructed in the last 10 years. I think every one of them is under the 4,500 square foot under this calculation. Some are borderline very close to it, but I don't think anyone has exceeded it. And I haven't met anyone who has a real problem. They, they would rather not have these new homes, but they're attractive, nice homes. They've already established they've been here. What we need to do is maintain that we can't go above that. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure how far down you can take it and still be fair. If the guy who bought a lot last year to build his home when he retires next year, has, is, has got a 25, 30% decrease in what he was able to build when he bought the lot, are we looking for litigation? I mean, you, you have some sembl of, of fairness as well as a, a max regulation.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this is a good compromise. I think we've been up and down this, the scale, uh, you know, over the past two years and, uh, uh, you know, I think we're in a good position here on, on that. At least that's my, my sense. At the 4,500. Good. I just wanted to summarize kind of the way I was thinking about it to make sure it was, uh, not, I wasn't missing something in your, uh, in this, um, section four that, um, I should consider, so.
Well, a lot of thoughts been put into it, but there's always something you did not see or think about. So we need all the feedback we can get. And also I want to point out, what we're doing here is working on a recommendation. We're not making any decisions.
Yeah, right.
We're gonna come up with what our homework says we think is a fair recommendation. And we're going to pass that on to the commissioners and the public at a public hearing.
Yeah.
To decide whether our recommendations are fair, hold water, or need to be tweaked or sent back to us. This is a, a final stage of the beginning stage. It's not the final stage.
Yeah, good. I just, I just, I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, and then, um, because we had a blank in the, the RR district, um, for the multifamily dwellings, we have just used a calculation of keeping it the same. Maximum square footage of any single family dwelling shall be 5,100 square feet calculated by the above. Multifamily dwellings, in other words, townhouses, um, located in the RR district shall be limited to 5,100 square feet for every 5,000 square foot of land. Fred, we needed to add that, that for every 5,000 square foot of land. In other words, your same density will be true for the multifamilies, but it's based on square footage. If you've got 12,000 square foot, you can do the math. It's the same density as would be for a single family.
That was not intentionally removed from the consensus that, uh, that had been reached at the last meeting. Um, I think it was more a concern that, um, we, we weren't 100% positive what the, uh, how the language was reading based on the handwriting. So, uh, thanks for picking up on that.
Okay, uh, and that's open for discussion. I was trying, just, we were, we were searching for a fair method of filling in those X's since we don't understand the multifamily as well as the single family. Now, okay, unless there's a question, um, I'm going to defer the next one, which is the tiered setbacks. Back to, uh, Remington Vernick Engineers, our planners recommend for us. Considering Dewey Beach's height limitations and setback standards, tiered setbacks do not appear necessary. RVE recommends eliminating tiered setbacks. If the town has experienced setback and encroachment issues, consideration should be given to amending setback requirements. A lot of public comment is that you're trying to build bigger houses. Removing the tiered setback is encouraging larger homes. We're relying on Remington on this suggestion and it's very open for discussion. Um, we're not encouraging larger homes. At least that's not our goal.
Yeah, I agree. Do you think when, when, uh, Remington made that recommendation, they had in their mind that we were at the two and a half story, 2.5 story as opposed to the three that we're now proposing?
It shouldn't make any difference though.
So the question would be, if I understand the setback is if you get up to the third floor, the way the setback's written now, is at the top floor that you'd have to be five feet more. So if the setback on the back of the house is 12, we'd actually have to set back an additional five, which would mean 17 feet, right, on the third floor?
No, our front yard setback is 18 feet, so it would be 13, or be 23 feet back.
Right, 23 from the front and from the back of the house, from the back house would be 12 plus five, right?
No, I think it's only tiered on the front by table two.
And I think that's correct. I think it was designed so you're not looking straight up from the road at the, at the third stories. We've had a great deal of difficulty though applying this uh, in an instance where the house is already, say in your example, Rick, 23 feet back. Does the tiered setback rule require you to go to 28 feet? Or are you compliant with the tiered setback?
The way, the way the language is, it's the building. If the, if the, if there's a third story, the building must be five foot further back. It, it, it's ambiguous in the.
Further back from the building or further back from the setback? And if it's already that far back, if it's already 28 feet back, then this has just been a very troublesome provision from the enforcement side and.
Yep, I, I'd agree. The way it reads, Fred, if I could, is covered and or enclosed portions of a third story, minimum additional five foot setback beyond the minimum front yard or rear yard for any building face abutting a street, the ocean, or bay. So.
Building, building faces the problem.
Right, building faces is, so I, I clearly say, so where I'm, where I'm just asking the question here is, so if I'm on the back of a house and I'm 12 feet off the back, I can literally basically be a, a wall, right? All the way up 35 feet would be a wall. So I could literally be just 12 feet off the property line, straight up 35 feet. Less a roof line, right? That's a, that's what we're suggesting if we eliminate this.
Well, as I'm, that's not what we weren't really opinionated on this, so we went with Remington's, uh, recommendation. And we can ignore Remington's or revise Remington's and, uh, do anything we want.
But, but I would agree with you.
In the very best scenario, we need to clarify the language in table two regarding the tiered setback.
Absolutely. I agree with you 100% there, Rick. It is very, very unclear the way it's written. So I, I totally agree with you on that.
So where do we go with the, um, recommendation perhaps on the tiered setback?
I, I would, I would favor the, uh, the Remington, uh, suggestion in a, in a, in a course of simplicity and, and interpretation, you know, as a building, building code. I mean, that's my opinion and, uh, I don't see why we would, uh, we would not, um, not go ahead with that recommendation. I don't know if there's any alternative. I mean, I don't, you know, I, I, you know, obviously that, that the concept of a 35 foot wall in the front is troubling, but with the setbacks that we have, that's not, I don't think that's a visual issue.
More, you know, more, I guess the, where I would say is more in the back of a home, where you're only, it could be 12 feet. And now you've got a home that towers over, if a, if a house butts up to a house behind it, now you've got basically a house that could tower over one of the smaller houses here. But I'm, I'm in agreement. It's badly written and we need a better way of saying it for sure. Or, or eliminated, if that's the case.
If we have one issue that we are not, uh, really sure of the answer, perhaps the, uh, the town council can throw in, uh, the, the correct answer for this one.
There you go. That's where we go. That's what we call kicking it up. Pass the buck up.
Well, the, I think the direction would be, um, not so much how the language would read, but whether you wanted to maintain tiered, uh, a tiered setback, um, on the front or the rear of the property. And then I could certainly work on the language. So it's a matter of what you all want to recommend.
I would love to have some form of architectural requirement in here that does, dis- discourage the flat wall 35 foot front back.
Yeah.
Most people I think are going to want a home that looks a little more attractive than a 30 foot, five foot wall front back with decks and, and dormers and different ways to make a house attractive architecturally. But can we mandate it and enforce it? That's our, our issue.
Yeah. So I would agree on, on Rick with that one is that, uh, it, it would be nice to maintain it if we could find a, a way in which we could enforce it.
If you mind, Rick.
Pardon me?
I don't see, and this is Jim D's. I don't see a problem with enforcement in the requirements for five foot setback, either front or back. It's simple for us to look at that. It's when you go to the third, the question is, do you want to go to that third story with no setbacks at all? That's the bottom line.
I don't think so. I think it's, it's a good idea to have a requirement to architecturally make your house not a wall. Is it the third story? Do you do it second and third story? I mean, uh, now you're starting to get into an architectural review process that, um,
I don't think it's an architectural, I don't think it's an architectural review. I, it's a, it's a matter of, do you want straight walls all up and down, front and back if you go to 35 feet? In the past, the tiered setback really was an, an opportunity for us to prevent that from happening aesthetically. Call it what you want. Maybe it's an architectural review, but that was the sense. On two stories, I don't think we care about it, uh, from, I didn't think that we cared about it, but maybe you do. But I think it's when you go to that third story that you want some, some kind of a setback to distinguish it or to make it more acceptable aesthetically, if you don't like that word, but aesthetically, um, in, in the neighborhood residential district.
So perhaps we clean up the language with table two as it is.
That's what I think.
With a cleanup?
Yes, with a cleanup.
So with that, what that, that will promote, if I, if I can, a, um, a front porch and a, perhaps a, a rear porch on the third floor? Or is that, is that railing that would be around that area also subject to the setback?
I would hope not. An open deck should be part of, could be within the setback.
So you're talking about fully enclosed areas.
It's the wall. It's the wall we're avoiding.
Right. Okay.
Right, so, so, um, Rick, just so I'm clear, a open deck is not part of the square footage calculation, right? Anything that is open, right? That, so if somebody had an open deck, then it wouldn't be included.
Wouldn't be included in the calculation of the square footage, nor would it be included in the tiered area.
Right. Let me, let me ask one other thing. So if someone were to put, um, not a, a fully enclosed, but like a, I'll say like a, a candle lever or some kind of an open canopy, would that be considered closed at that point?
You're talking about a removable awning?
Uh, an awning would be a good example or something architectural that was just open that had like the appearance of bars across the top, but was not closed.
Like a pergola.
Yeah, well, thank you. That's what I'm looking for.
Under, the way we have it, it's under roof. And a pergola or an awning would not be under roof.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So what was our recommendation here? To go with the engineer or go with the five foot setback on a third floor? This is, do we have a decision on that?
I would vote for the five foot setback on the, uh, the third story. There's also some language in our code that it's 50% of your third floor has to be five foot setback somewhere. Because you can have a, a dorm or some structure, but there's a, only so much of that frontage needs to be in the setback. I'm not sure where that lies in table two, or maybe it's part of the building code. That needs to be looked at, Fred.
Well, my, my experience, and I might be wrong about this, is that often these setbacks are used for, um, uh, heating and cooling facility. That is, you can have a compressor out there, um, maybe not in the front of the house, but in the back of the house. And it's, and it's not on the roof, so it doesn't extend the, the height of the, of the building, but it takes about a third of the, third of a deck and uses it for, for the air conditioning system. Is that a, that's a, that's a, uh, a, a, a way that people can, can situate a, um, you know, compressor on the outside of their house as opposed to putting it on the roof or putting it on the ground? Uh, you know, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with that. I think it's a, it's a function, it's a, it's a way that you get functionality out of that, uh, out of that setback.
I think HVAC units are allowed to be in the setback in all districts.
They're allowed to be in the setback?
Yes, I believe so.
I believe they are.
Well, sure, you could put it, you could put it on the ground in your setback, but you could also put it on your, on your third, uh, floor, uh, deck.
What, I don't understand the, it sounds like a drawback to the homeowner as opposed to abusing the setback, uh, rule. How does that affect the setback?
Well, it, it, it doesn't. It would be, well, it would, um, you'd, you'd still have the, the effect that we're looking for. That is to get rid of the single wall, a 35 foot single wall. And you'd, uh, some engineer would have the function, uh, the, uh, option of putting uh, air conditioning equipment on, uh, a, a third of that, that deck sets out there. I, maybe it's, maybe it's not a, a question of discussion here. I'm, I'm just thinking that, uh, you know, I've seen, I think there's a number of cases in the town where you can see that people have put their compressors on, on the, um, on some of these, uh, some of these decks and it uses about a third of the deck maybe for their compressor systems. I don't know if that's, uh, you know, I, I think it's an attractive solution. It gets it off of the ground and it gets it, uh, it's not a protr- protrusion on the top and the, on the top of the building. I don't know, maybe I could go on. I don't have any, I don't think, have anything specifically to recommend here, so it's not, maybe it's not a question of, that we need to discuss at the moment.
So in section five, uh, for clarity, uh, Rick, where, where you're at, what's written is we were going to go with the engineer, but what we're, what we're talking about is to go with the five foot setback on the third story. That's.
Keep table two as it is with clarified language.
Right, right.
On the tier.
Does that work for you?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I always had a, uh, a second thought as to their recommendation. It just, we didn't understand it enough to, uh, argue with them, but as a group, we seem to have a, a disagreement with removing that, uh, requirement.
So, so what we'll do, Fred, what we'll do is after Rick gets through the next section, uh, next few sections, we'll go to each commissioner, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get a summary, maybe David could summarize it and, uh, you know, and then, uh, and opinion by each commissioner, what they're thinking that they're gonna, uh, support. We'll go to a public hearing and then we'll come out of a public hearing and we'll see if we're ready for a recommendation or if we gotta continue to deliberate and, and another meeting.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
All right.
If I could.
Go ahead, Fred.
The, the way the language currently reads, that, that additional setback is going to apply only when the structure is abutting a street, the ocean, or the bay. And I think the way it was discussed, uh, particularly by Mr. Lyons, was he'd like to see it in, in, in a rear yard.
As well.
As well.
That, that was my suggestion, yes.
So the rear yard in most cases is gonna abut, you know, the rear of another home as opposed to a street, the ocean, or the bay. So.
Uh, just as devil's advocate, um, the rear yard is a 12 foot setback. Let's say a home builds the back of their house to 20 feet. So they have a bigger backyard. Do they then still have to make a tiered setback on their third level? That's become very restrictive. I, I don't think it should be front and rear.
It's only five foot from the setback, not five foot from the existing house.
Well, the way it's being written now is five foot from the existing house.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, I was confused. I, I'm all for the additional five foot setback, but I think it should be five foot from the, what setback is, not the, not the house.
So if you build your house 20 So if you build your house twenty-three feet back from the road, you can have a three-foot or a three-story wall.
Well, now you're back a lot further, so you're getting rid of the effect of the wall.
All right. I'm just trying to be clear on, yeah, this is the way it's written now, is you can move your whole building back and have a wall.
Like you said, I don't think anybody's gonna do that, just because then they're losing a lot of their lot, but.
Some people may run a backyard more than a larger house.
You could, if you set it back far enough, you could build another wall just to, to break it up, but nobody would ever do that. But the point is, you would, you know, you would, you could have an artificial, you could have a wall that just sits there, and then you have the setback from that wall. So you would get rid of the thirty-five-foot wall effect, but you'd, you know, I don't think there'd be any sense to that. I think if you're, if you're setback sufficiently, the wall's not gonna be a, an impact.
Well, then the, then the table two is written correctly.
So anyway, I don't know. That's that's the way I would look at it. That is, if you, if you're setback far enough that you don't need the five-foot setback on the third floor, then, then you've complied, you, you've, you've met the objective of keeping the walls away from the, your neighbors' boundaries.
You're right, Marty. You're right.
I agree with that.
Then the code as it is, Fred, is pretty much right on.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, we'll listen to the public comments and go from there.
Well, the public comments, for the most part, are thinking that, there's a lot of suspicion, but anytime you talk about zoning changes, there is going to be suspicion. But they view the tiered setback elimination encouraging larger homes, and I can understand that.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so tiered setbacks, it looks like we're going to stay close to what table two has currently, and if it needs some language clarification, Fred can do that. Is that the consensus?
Yep, I'd agree.
Yes.
Okay.
Section six.
Okay, the section six is simply confirming what we had said before, that we're taking the maximum floor area per unit and applying it to all zoning districts. Section seven is a, a small change. Now, it's, it's gotten a lot of public comment because, again, it's, it's, it's an area that opens the door to, to certain thoughts. Basements, there are very few properties that actually can have basements in our town, but even those that are allowed to have basements, they're below ground, and you cannot have any living space below ground. FEMA and our code prohibits living space below a certain elevation above sea level. So there's no real threat to a basement becoming living area legally. In other words, we're gonna simplify our table to say whatever state regulations allow for a basement is okay with us. But the onus on, on state regs, not on Dewey Beach.
So, Rick, I have just one clarifying question. Is it possible, so we say above ground, so there is, is there a possibility that someone could build, have a sunken, I'll describe it this way, like a sunken entrance into a house that would actually go into, let's say, a basement, and therefore the first floor would not be included in the square footage? Does that make sense?
The way we have this, the way we have square footage, it's above grade.
Anywhere above grade.
So if you're going down five feet and up five feet, you're not below grade.
You are below grade, right? If you went down.
You're half, you're half below grade, but at the top of your ceiling is above grade.
Right.
Then you don't qualify for being below grade. It's included in the calculation.
It's included. That's what I'm trying to say, is that if somebody went down.
If you go into a real basement, no, but if you are a half basement and you got the ability to use it as a, a living area, that's not a bedroom, but a living area, then it should be included. That's the above grade.
That's it. Thank you.
That's the way I interpret that.
Yep.
All right, then the, the one that got the most public comment, there was one adamant in favor and about ten adamantly against the town having any say in how they landscape their front yard, and they were very strong on this. We came up with the idea, and it was basically Dave Lyons and myself, that this would be a nice way to set a trend to separate your yard from the street and parking, and it would look as a super beneficial to the neighborhood. Maybe people could do it on their own, but with the, the the super comments on this particular one, I think it might be wise to, after front yard, after the second sentence, front yard, x-ing out the rest of the addition to section eight, so it would read fifth, minimum fifteen percent of gross lot area dedicated to planting and beautification area. A minimum of fifty percent of this requirement shall be located in the front yard, period. And hope people do it anyway.
I don't, I don't have any strong feelings about your proposal, Rick, but I guess when I get to my comments, I was just gonna say, just why even include anything in section eight? Because that wasn't really part of the assignment originally. I don't think they were looking more for far and stuff like that.
That was part of table two.
Yeah, right, but, you know, why, 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 you know, stir it up if, you know, you got, you got more people that were against what we were saying and for it, and, you know, it's not really part, you know, of the square footage. So I don't feel strongly, I'm gonna vote against, I'm gonna ask that we get section eight, but I won't, you know, hold anything up. Like, if we gotta have that first sentence, we'll keep it. But let's go on, it's just fair.
That's, that's our last section.
Is it? Okay.
That's our entire ordinance.
So to me, I mean, I'd just like to just scratch eight, because, you know, why, why get our hands dirty when, when there's no reason? Where are you at, Jim? I mean, town hall, where's town hall on this?
The only comment I have is planter boxes. They're great when you put them in, but they don't last, they're gone.
Yeah.
I, I just assumed strike planter boxes.
But we did. That's part of the last three sentences.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't see it stricken.
Yeah, well, no, it isn't, it isn't stricken on the ordinance per se, but we have agreed to strike it. It's in yellow on my sheet.
Okay, very good. Now, you're way ahead of me.
I, I've said, as you know, I, Rick, I thought it was a good idea to, but it really, it just did not sit well with the public at all, so.
That's alchemy.
So I'm, I'm okay. I mean, I think there, we could, we could address this in some other time, if everybody would prefer to just strike section eight. I'm, I'm okay going forward with what we just suggested, which was the first sentence.
Well, I think that's the original table two. We'll stay with the original.
Just stay with table two and just be quiet on it, other than that.
All right, so we'll go around the room as far as the Dewey planning zoning commissioners, any quick comments? Where, where you're at, and then we'll open up the public hearing. I'll go last, if you're okay with that. Rick, you wanna say anything before, you know, because you're, you're just speaking first anyway, if you have anything else to say?
I just, I overlooked one, I think, important part of the first two paragraphs, which is that we have no restrictions on open decks. And people said, why would you possibly want unlimited open decks? Well, you only have so much room in your setbacks to build on. The more open decks you have, the less structure you have. So the more open decks people have, the smaller the building is, and the more shape and architectural diversity it has, and that's why we came up, and I wanted us to put that out to the public, that we're not trying to increase party zones, we are encouraging smaller structures, more open decks.
So that can always change, you know, we, you know, there's.
There aren't no restrictions on open decks at present. We just made it a black and white issue.
Yep.
Rick, one clarifying question. Do the open decks have to sit within the setbacks?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a comment on that. If it's on the ground and it's a ground deck, it can go into the setbacks.
Right, but that's part of your yard, that's the ground level.
I do, yes, but it's an open deck.
If you want to, if you want to deck your backyard, you may, you may do that.
That's right.
Good.
I'm talking about open decks as part of the structure.
As you go up, right? As you go up to the second or third floor, if you wanted to have an open deck, it has to sit within the setbacks?
Yes.
I agree.
All right, Dave Lyons, why don't you go first? Well, second, because Rick just went, unless Rick, you've done.
I'm done.
All right.
Well, actually, what I'd like to do is, if, after public comment, I'm not sure how many guests we have in our Zoom meeting, but I would, I'd like to sum up the forty-three that I read briefly, just to get the public comments on the record. I'll do that after public comment.
Do it after public comment, okay. That's cool. Are you up, Dave?
Okay, so first of all, Rick, thank you. There's a lot of work, and I truly appreciate everything, everything else the other commissioners here have done to get us to this far. I have just kind of two comments, basically based on some of what RVE put forth and some of what I read in the public comment. And that would be related around just two items, the number of stories. So I, I think we should consider two and a half stories with different language that makes it easier in which to, for the, for the city to be able to maintain. RV did give me some, some wording that I'm happy to share with the group, if we could consider that regarding the size of the half-story, some of the roof lines and things like that. So I would be in favor of keeping the two and a half stories with some better definition as to what the half-story is. The other area that I, I would ask the commissioners to consider is the overall size. I know we feel like we've come down from fifty-five hundred to forty-five hundred, but if we take a look at three factors, one, we take a look at what surrounding communities have, we take a look at what Bethany or Fenwick, Rehoboth is extreme at point six, but most of those are around thirty-five hundred. So my comfort zone would be at thirty-seven fifty. I would probably be willing to go as far as four thousand, but I think we're a little too large yet at forty-five hundred. And the last thing is that RVE also recommended, which is our consultants, recommended somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand square feet. So those are my two thoughts. Most of the other changes we made here today have clarified my concerns, and that would be the only, only two that I would bring forth and see what the public has to say. Thank you.
All right, Dave, appreciate it. Let's go with Mark Norquist, do you have any comments?
No, no comments.
All right, thank you, Mark. Tim Felicky?
My only comments were, I, I would agree with having the additional five-foot setback for three stories, and that setback, I mean, that additional five feet being from the setback, not the face of the house. And I would also agree with the total floor area. I, I also believe that should definitely be under four thousand.
All right.
Other than that, that's it.
All right, Jim, appreciate it. Let me make sure I get everybody here. So we got Jimmy O'Connor.
As far as the square footage, I would agree that forty-five hundred is probably too big, and I would probably think more of four thousand, even including everything under, under roof. And the two and a half story opposed to the three, if it was, if it was worded in a way that it was clear and precise, I think a three-story wall thirty-five feet up is a little too much as well. Other than that. Good.
All right, thank you, Jimmy. It might be me as the last person. Let me see, Mark, Marty, Marty?
No, I think I've given my comments, but you know, I think we're in the right direction, going to smaller sizes. Forty-five feet is, in my mind, a compromise between where we were and, and what is compatible with the, the north end of the town, so you know, maybe it'd be great to go lower, but, you know, there's some issues with that. I think if we keep the setback, the five-foot setback and the, or the tiered, the tiered setback, the five-foot tiered setback, I'm happy with the forty-five hundred feet.
All right, anything else there, Marty? You good? Thank you. All right, I'll, I'll go and close. The, if, if we could, to address the two and a half to three story, where am I at on that? I'd prefer to stick with the two and a half story, because we've heard so many people, I really prefer to go to two, two stories, just to really be done with it, because everybody's so mad about, you know, higher houses in the, in the north end, but we, we've tried to define the, the two and a half, and I don't know, you know, unless Rick has a way to magically define it any better, or Jim Deeds, I don't know that we can define it any better. I mean, we've done diagrams and all that kind of stuff over the years, and it's just been a nightmare for town hall. I really want, like I said, I really would like to see the two or two and a half, but I don't know that it's gonna work for town hall. Jim Deeds is here, so his opinion's gonna sway me to two and a half or three. So I'm on the fence on that till Jim Deeds weighs in. And, and Rick also, you know, the question is, do you think we can define it any better? If we can, let's stick with the two and a half. So that's where I'm at there. Let me finish, and then we'll, we'll get Jim and Rick. Then the four thousand, four thousand versus forty-five hundred, I'm, I'm gonna prefer to see four thousand square feet. The forty-five hundred is a great step in the right direction, but folks still don't believe us, I don't think. And they don't believe that we're listening to them. You know, I think we have forty-five hundred on, on paper now. We've had forty-five hundred through the last meeting or two, and, you know, I, I hear the public opinion that, you know, it, it may be a little misinformed, because we're definitely going down, down, down in square footage with the forty-five hundred, but I'll go along with four thousand, because that's still a heck of a house. And it, you know, for those of, well, I don't have a dog in the fight, but for those of us who like the smaller houses, this addresses, you know, is a major, major addressment to your public comments. And whether or not Fred can defend that going forward, that's gonna be up to the town commissioners and Fred, you know. But I'll tell you what, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing four thousand on there. As far as the, keep the five-foot tiered setback, you know, as we discussed, yeah, I'm on board with that for the architectural feature reason. So my question to Jim Deeds first is, you know, do you think we can define two and a half stories any better? Because if we can, I'm gonna go with three, because I'll now end the nightmare.
I can only tell you that I would, your, your question's a good question. Dawn and I, or Dawn Hanks and I, Dawn is our building inspector, and when we're looking at new homes, we're pretty clear as to defining two and a half stories. I mean, but for the average person coming in, it's confusing. And, but we've got it down, going through the fifty percent formula that we have, though, on two sides, when you include the knee walls, and then you take the sides that include fifty percent, like dormers, we're able to figure it out pretty quickly. Yeah, it does cause some sort of a consternation with the architects when they come in, but we can do that, and we can easily live with a three-story as well. So, you know, we'll, we'll go either way, whatever you want. That's, that's helpful. That's very helpful.
Yeah, and if I can just offer, I did ask RVE to help write words that would better define the two and a half stories. So I can certainly share that with the group. I can read it to you quickly, or after post the public comment, I can certainly put it out there for everybody to hear.
It's your call, Dave, if you, is it a quick read?
It's a quick read.
We won't put it in the ordinance, but we won't put it in the ordinance.
We'll put it in, I'll just give you a sense of it. Right? Okay, so they were, a minimum roof pitch of four, four twelve is required for all roofs. The floor area of the third story is limited to fifty percent of the floor area under a gable, hip, or shed roof excluding mazur and gamble roofs. The type of roof that would be permitted or prohibited should extend the entire roof over the half-story. That's basically what they gave me.
Yeah, it's, that, you know, that, that sounds a little complex, but I mean, I'm following it myself personally, so, you know, just like Jim testified, I mean, he's, you know, they, they've got the two and a half story, you know, defined pretty well. But that was one of the assignments, trying to simplify the building process, where at least maybe we're meeting town hall halfway, you know, we're getting, we're getting the square footage nailed down instead of far and all that. So they get some help, not, not all the help that maybe they needed. So I might, I'm, I'll be waiting to see who proposes, you know, the draft here. You know, we have the draft ordinance and what the changes are, but I'll go with two and a half or three. I'd prefer to see a two and a half, but just from the perception of, of the public comments where, and it's like, hey, you're on the third story. They don't really understand, and it's really, you know, not that big a deal. But because, you know, they don't understand it fully, and we got two and a half in place now, and it seems like town hall's able to deal with it, and, and I'll go along with either of those. So I'm four thousand square foot is what I'd support, like to say, or try to support. And the two and a half or three, I'm on the fence and tiered setback. Other than that, I'll be quiet. And I'd like to see the, the bushes, just like we just talked about in section eight, just, just with that first sentence in there. Other than that, Rick, do you have any clarifications on the two and a half or three, or you're good, and we're ready to open up for public comment?
I think we have a couple of issues that we have to be considered of in terms of fairness. We spent a couple of years working on the We spent a couple of years working on the half-story definition, finally got it resolved. We had ambiguities in the code in the definition stage. And the, the truth is that the half-story that we finally came to grips with at thirty-five foot height, and you're not going to be able to take the thirty-five foot height away from anybody. That, that would cause a revolution. You're not going to see much difference between a two and a half story house and a three-story house. The definition that Remington gave to Dave Lyons is very different from the definition of a half-story we have on the books. Problem is, a lot of homes have been built with that definition. A lot of people have invested in properties over the years for their retirement that haven't built yet. That are going to be largely impacted if we change the half-story dramatically or if we change the square footage dramatically. I think a lot of our neighbors, if you want to be as, not as restricted, but go on the restrictions of, like Rehoboth. Their garages are not included in that far. So you want to go to four thousand square feet and not have a, a real difference to what can you build today and not build tomorrow, I think we should exclude garages. That's, that's how we compromise down to the twenty percent or a point eight far by including garages, which I like. Everything under roof included because of potential changes in the future. You have, and I've talked to Fred and Fred, like your input on this, how far can we go with reductions in zoning without taking property rights and values away from people who have invested in our town?
Rick, that's an excellent question. There's no real bright line test that we could apply to say, well, this is too far and that is defensible. So.
But I think, I think we have a desire for an answer, but I don't have a, I don't have a good answer for you.
I mean, I think, I think we have a good balance in the sense that we've given and taken. We certainly gave from the fifteen-foot setback on the corner lots to China, at least that's what we're thinking about. We've got, if we go to the third floor and not the two and a half, that's, maybe that's a give. But we have the five-foot tiered setback for the third floor. And, you know, I just see a balance in what we've done here. I don't, I think it's, I think it's, you know, appropriate and it's valuable to the, to the property owner. So I, I see that as a, as a way to go. In fact, I'd consider the four thousand square feet after this discussions instead of the forty-five hundred. Because of the other, other gives that we've, that are, the relaxation of the setbacks and so forth, the setback on the corner lots and so forth.
All right, so, you know, Rick, Rick, I mean, we're talking five hundred square feet. I mean, yeah, it does, it does make a difference. I mean, I, I think that everything under, under roof is, is a great idea. I think we leave it that way. But I, I don't know, you know, what, what number is going to come out after the public hearing, whether it's going to be four thousand or forty-five hundred is kind of what we're talking about. And both would, both the four thousand would be everything under roof as well as the forty-five hundred. So we might lose another five hundred square feet. I don't know if that's enough, you know, the, 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 the straw that's going to break the camel's back or not as far as folks getting upset. But, you know, with, with all the, all the public input we've had, with most of the public input being smaller, smaller, smaller. We did get some recent correspondence from one that, you know, was, was hinting at taking away rights and things like that. And, you know, it's, it's, we're taking away a forty-five hundred too. So I think Remington Vernic, or RVE's, Remington Vernic Engineers report, Dave Lyons, didn't it suggest anywhere from thirty-five hundred to four thousand?
It did.
So we'll blame that on the engineering, engineering.
Exactly.
They should, they should have made forty-five hundred, I might go forty-five hundred, but we're saying four thousand. That's, that's what I'm going to support, but I don't feel strongly.
Let, let's hear, let's hear from the public, I mean, it's a good time.
All right, so it's a good time to open it up. Thank you, Fred, for your great advice as usual. And we will go right to the public hearing and we're going to leave the commissioners, our, our, our meeting open. The commissioners discussion open for dialogue purposes. So Ashley, how many, can you tell us how many we have and how many, how many we have, just so we get an idea how much longer we're going to be and let the first person in?
There are five in the waiting room and the first one will be Jay McLaughlin.
All right, let's hear Jay. If you'd state your address, also anybody coming in, just state your name and address in Dewey Beach and go from there. And try to keep it to less than five minutes so we keep it reasonable instead of rambling on. Are you there? And it takes a little while probably to try to catch through like the last meeting we had. There's Jay, I see, I see the Jay McLaughlin, I don't see the microphone on or the video, so I'm not sure if you can get video. But Jay, as soon as you've got a mic, if your mic's off, just turn it on or go ahead and just start talking. Not sure, Jay, Jay McLaughlin's having some technical difficulties. Let's, let's, let's be patient here, maybe time it, give it, give it a minute or so, just to make sure the technology's not a problem. Let, let Chase's technology or whatever internet service catch up. We'll just hang out for a minute. Just put my clock on one minute, I just started just now, sort of fifty-five seconds. But, you know, this is, I, that, we'll do it that way for everybody coming in, just in case the technology, so. If, that's all right. So Jay, we'll wait on you for forty, forty more seconds or so and assume the technology's not allowing you to get in. And we really apologize if you had something you wanted to say. We can hang up if we can't get you in, come back, try to get Ashley, get you back in. Okay? All right, I think Jay McLaughlin dropped off, so timer's up. So let's go ahead, Ashley, with the next person.
That's looks like Brant Imperator?
All right, Brant, are you there? I see your video is not on, but your microphone might be on. Brant, can you state your address and try to keep it under five minutes? So Ashley, is there any, is there any, are we, is there any button or anything that's keeping people from talking? I don't know if there is or not, I'm not sure.
Audio still.
Brant? Looks like we're having some kind of problem getting people to hear their voices.
I will leave him in and I can bring the next one in.
Yeah, let's do that, let's try that.
Next one is Marcia.
I see Marcia's box there. Marcia? Yep, I, I see her microphone, go ahead, Marcia. Marcia, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, there we go, we have contact.
Okay, thank you. Just before my minutes stop, I think it's really important that we get these meeting issues resolved. Because I feel like people are attending the meeting and then not being able to get on to speak. And it was very difficult a lot of the time, so I hope we can address that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Marcia, what's your address?
Okay, thank, one oh three Carolina, thank you again. I just made a lot of notes and I kind of want to go through them one by one. As far as the comment that we aren't going to change something in the zoning because people don't understand it. I really think that we shouldn't decide to not change zoning because property owners aren't educated about it or don't understand it. I don't think that's a good reason to leave it as is. As you said, you've been going through these meetings for almost two years and it's the property owner's responsibility to be involved and understand. So I just hope that we don't go in that direction. As far as the reduced setbacks and there was a comment about whether there were unintended consequences on King Charles and Bayard. The answer's no, you would actually, if you turned your house to face the front, King Charles or Bayard, you would penalize yourself by eighteen feet. So none of us would ever do that. And I own several corner lots. You, you would have a much greater setback if you did it that way. Three, two and a half stories to three stories, I'm in agreement with Rick Judge. You, it hasn't worked. There have been a lot of houses that have been built on the two and a half story premise and it hasn't worked. And I've rarely seen one with the investment of what people are making in the property values in the north end that aren't beautiful. That simplifies it, you already have a roof pitch that takes care of it not being a wall. So understand, you cannot have just a straight wall because there's a requirement for a roof pitch. So I just wanted to clarify that. Go, your proposal on the last meeting was forty-five hundred, now there's a proposal on the table to four thousand? I think you are making, taking away significant property rights if you're taking away a thousand square feet of buildable space. As a property owner of multiple properties, I think that does, in a property owner's mind, cross the line of five hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. And I, I just hope you give more consideration to that. As far as the unintended consequences of going from forty-five hundred to four thousand. You are certainly limiting people on the desire to build porches and garages. Because now I'm, that might take it down to thirty-two or three thousand once you add in porches and garages. So I hope you will consider keeping it at the forty-five hundred. When you look at Bethany and other towns, they have been consistently at the square footage they've been at for a very, very long time. These are semi drastic changes over a course of a couple of years. And I do think you, you, there are going to be consequences of property owners who came in not, you know, thinking they were building five thousand square feet. I don't have any of those homes, but I just feel as someone who owns property, that would be pretty striking to me. The tiered setbacks is my biggest concern in terms of going from eliminating them to trying to have some convoluted language to figure out how to tier the third floor while you still have a roof pitch. Your roof pitch is taking care of that, your roof pitch requirement takes care of that. You're already back eighteen feet. And I think what the tiered, what, what many of us have never liked about the tiered setbacks and why the engineers are recommending elimination, they don't work. I can't find a single property that's been built since we've initiated them that has actually followed them. So now you're going to have a law you passed years ago that hasn't been enforced. You're going to try to tweak it and it's going to be a problem again. And then people are going to look back to saying, well, why didn't you enforce it for them? I think you make it clean. People are paying a million plus minimum for lots on the north end. In general, those people are paying a lot of money for architects to build beautiful homes. I don't think you have to artificially worried about having walls on the north end. That said, you can't keep someone from building a home that isn't pretty. And I don't like to see us throwing ourselves into the mix of architectural design with things like tiered setbacks. In many ways, that would limit me from a really beautiful house that's two and a half stories. Two and a half or three is virtually the same because of the requirement of the roof pitch. So I think everybody's getting that confused that it's going to be a wall. It never has been, it never will be. And if you go to three stories, it's clean and you have your four, I think four twelve roof pitch, Rick? I'm not sure what it was. But I don't think you drive around this north end where people are paying one million to two million for a lot and find that they're building boxes. That's, we've, we've organically moved beyond that. I don't think you have to insert how I have to build my house on the third floor. I, I really find that I do not want a third floor that sets back in a beautiful house I'm going to build. If I were to build something of that, like that. I think that is, you're, you're starting to get an encampment style house. So everybody's house on the third floor is going to look the same. And that is not what our comprehensive plan wanted. I want you to think about organically, the lot values here have taken care of that. The roof pitches have taken care of that. The reduced square footage. And going back to the setbacks, it seems to me like everybody's on board with reducing from fifteen to ten. My opinion is there's no justification whatsoever or data that justifies the intent of making it ten versus eight. And it's really fairness to property owners on a code that was pulled out of somewhere that just didn't apply to Dewey Beach. And I, I'd like to see us clean it up and clean it up fairly. We certainly can't build bigger houses on a corner lot. We certainly can't build anything different from anyone else. And even if they made a four-lane highway, we still have a greater setback at eight than any interior lot. And if that's the case, then we need to change all the interior lots to ten. I mean, it's really about making solid code that has meaning and basis and justification. And that setback at anything less than the normal setback for everyone else, given all the data we've showed you. And in fact, Bayard Avenue is five feet additional. King Charles is forty-one feet from the edge of the road to the property setback at eight. Bayard is forty-five feet. So I, I'd like to see us making, you all have done such great work, but I'd like to see us making decisions to clean up this code that are logical and simplified and don't add additional problems. Tiered setbacks has been in enforcement for two years and it hasn't been enforced and there's no house that's been built with one. Clean up the setbacks and just fairness for all. And I, I think it's going, tweaking a bit too far when you're going from proposed forty-five to four and then you have to reduce because you have already now changed it and adding porches, covered porches and garages. For someone who builds with a lot of porches, that's going to really limit my porches. And I just want to thank you. I know I've been at a lot of your meetings, it's been a lot of work and I appreciate your thoughtfulness in all of this.
Thank you, Marcia, I really appreciate your testimony. We'll talk to you later. Let's go with the next public comment. Ashley, if you have someone else?
Jay Marowitz.
All right, we saw Brant in there, but we haven't heard from Brant. So Brant, sorry about that, if you can't get through, but let's go with the next, next individual. All right.
Thank you, I know I've been at a lot of your meetings, it's been a lot of work and I appreciate your thoughtfulness in all of this.
Thanks, Marcia.
I really appreciate your testimony.
Jay just needs to turn YouTube off.
Delayed, okay, that's, that's our bad. Okay, so now we got Jay Arowitz, if you can state your address and keep your testimony to try to keep it to.
Yeah, yeah.
We saw Brant in there, but we haven't heard from Brant, so Brant, sorry.
Am I on?
Yes. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I got, I got a little confused about how the, the meeting got started here. I was just listening on YouTube and then I finally realized you had another channel for this. I'm at one, two, three Jersey Street and I'd like to talk about a few things. The main thing is the setback, I see no reason for setbacks to be different on corner lots. I'm an avid biker and I joined a bike club a couple of years ago. I got on the board and I said, hey, why are we doing things this way? And the answer I got was, we always did it that way. And that's how I feel about. And that's how I feel about these setbacks being different. Yeah, they always happen that way, but why? I don't see any reason. And I think the last meeting, when I testified, I asked you to complete a sentence that said that setbacks are this because, and you need a reason. And one decent because is they are uniform and they're all the same. I see no reason for changes. I haven't heard any arguments that move me to have them be different. And without getting into any real detail here, I don't know if you follow things in New York City. This is something that happened. It gets to the point of not counting certain things. There was a building in New York, and this happened this year. It's in the New York Times. They, it was an area where they had a building. They built an eighty story building and it was owned for sixty stories. And question, well, the permit was put in for. And the reason that they did that is that they don't count floors with utilities on it. Well, twenty percent of the floors were deemed utility rooms. So, you know, I mean, things like that can happen and it just, everything should count towards limits, square footages and things like that. It only makes sense. People can abuse it when you don't count. And that's an extreme example, but I think the plans are being reviewed. I don't think it actually passed in New York. Marcia said a lot of good things. I won't repeat what she said. I think I brought up last time, I don't think all the lots in Dewey are the same. And given that there is a distribution, whether you pick four thousand or forty-five hundred or whatever, it should be related to lot size somehow. In fact, I mean, if you just had a plot of here's how many lots are this, this big, that big, that big, and you could look at that and you would probably see that gee, it doesn't make sense to have a four thousand or forty-five hundred square feet for some of the lots as your maximum. So that concludes my comments and thank you all for handling all this fuzzy stuff. Oh, it's not easy.
Thank you so much, Jay. We really appreciate you for your comments. Thank you. All right, Ashley, we got anybody else?
So that concludes my comments and thank you all for handling all this fuzzy stuff. Oh, it's not.
All right, I think you have Alicia Farley. I see if I pronounced your name correctly, Alicia, if you would state your Dewey Beach address and name?
Sure.
And.
Great, thank you. My name's Alicia Farley. My husband Paul and I have a property at one thirteen Cullen Street. And then we just bought two hundred Chesapeake, a Chesapeake in Bayard where we're going to build our new primary residence and move to Dewey full time. We're excited about that. So, and I wanted to thank you all for all the work you've done. I sat in on the last call and this call and I can see you've done a lot of research and I really appreciate it. I don't have, I feel like there's been a lot of good comments. You all raised some good points and so have some of the other community members. So I just wanted to, since I hadn't sent an email in, go on record for some of the things I think we should do. And so having a corner lot, I do support the setback, the change to the setback. I think that that is fair and we'll keep it in line with the other lots. I think with the whole two and a half to three, I don't have a strong opinion there. I just don't want it to be more restrictive than it is now. And you all have mentioned that it's challenging to figure out what that two and a half is. So that would make me lean towards saying that three was okay. The forty-five hundred square feet, I feel like that would be, it's not really going to affect me if it goes from forty-five down to four, but I do, some people raise points that others have purchased properties with certain plans in mind for what they're going to do. So I think you don't want to change that too much for others. And lastly, I think Marcia raised some good points with with respect to people doing a good job, like you're spending a lot of money for your lot and your house. So you're going to make it aesthetically beautiful. So I don't really support the tiered setback. I don't feel like we need that. I think people are going to take care of that on their own. So that's really it. I wanted to just, again, thank you all for everything and look forward to what we, where we land. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your input. Appreciate it.
Look forward to what we, where we land. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your input. Appreciate it.
Am I in? Okay. I can never really tell. Hi, I'm Lynn Chup. I live at fifteen St. Louis Street. We also own two corner lots. Am I still there? I can't see. Okay. We also own two corner lots and I wanted to just speak to the setback today. Actually, let me take a step back. Last time I was under such a time, last time I spoke at one of these meetings, I was so rushed, I didn't get half of it out. I do have to say I'm impressed between the last meeting and this meeting with your committee. It's thorough. It's, everyone's so knowledgeable about it. It's very impressive and I appreciate the work that you're doing. I know how much time and effort goes into it. Having sat on many boards and many committees before, I hope you receive comments like that, that people appreciate what you're doing. So we own, and I echo a lot of what Marcia said, we own two corner lots. One has already been renovated and it was renovated three years ago with the fifteen foot setback. So it was a one story that went to a two story. And it was really complex to have that second story stepped in that extra five feet. And aesthetically, it's much less attractive than it otherwise would have been. And it required engineering work because you don't have that support wall on the exterior. And so it was extremely complicated and more expensive. And it didn't achieve anything that it wouldn't have had it been a normal eight foot setback like everything else. And so I'm in favor of the setback being eight feet, eight to ten feet on that side yard, especially when you're talking about people that are renovating as opposed to building a new property. It doesn't gain anything. I mean, all it does is makes a renovation more complicated. And so you push people to build something new and bigger and more expensive. And so if we're going to ten, why not go to eight and make it the same as everybody else? That's, it's not going to change what it looks like on Bayard. It actually makes the properties more unattractive. And if you look at some of the ones that have been built, and I think there are at least four of them that have the multiple setbacks because of the different setbacks at different times. It's just, it's not attractive. It doesn't look good. So that's really all I wanted to speak to. The other ones, I don't have enough knowledge. You know, the three stories or the square footage to speak to, but I just wanted to throw my two cents in on the setback. And also I will share with you that I know Brant submitted, he had to get on another call. So he submitted his contacts, his comments to Beth Caruso to share and he was going to speak to the setback as well because they're getting ready to renovate their corner lot and make it a full time residence. So thanks again, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Ashley, do we have anyone else in the waiting room?
There is no one else in the waiting room at this time.
All right. With that being said, and we did hear from Brant, and I'll assume that Brant was in favor of the setback change because of what Ben had said. Okay. So we're going to close the public hearing. And now we're on item three of the agenda. We'll discuss and possibly vote to make a recommendation about a draft ordinance regarding the floor area ratio and everything we've been talking about. So I will read the agenda. So my, I think my job comes too easy because usually the chair doesn't have to make the first proposal. So here we are, planning to any commissioners. If anyone wants to summarize the public comments first that we had heard and then maybe. Who wants to do the summary?
I've got a list of comments. After reading all forty-three of the ones I've received, I can sum it up pretty quickly and happy to have someone else add into comments that I didn't pick up on. But overall, with the forty-three comments, I had six that were completely misunderstood what we're trying to achieve. They simply thought everything we were doing was to create larger homes and help investors and developers. There were eight of the forty-three that were totally yes on all counts. There was one that was only yes on one count. That was the corner lot setback. There were nine that said, we're going in the right direction, but not enough. And most of that, I think seven of those were on a blanket letter that seven people signed. The one was an attorney, a government land use attorney, I forgot her name, but she was just cautioning us that the language in our proposed ordinance had ambiguities and inconsistencies and we better be careful in the verbiage of legalese. The other ones were mostly questions that had concerns or didn't understand something. So out of that, we've got eight that are total in favor of what we have proposed as is, which I was pleasantly surprised with because I, I know there's a lot of suspicion. Most of the concerns were that we were trying to increase rental space, that we were making changes to help friends and family, that we were changing for larger homes, that we were overreaching, trying to control landscaping. And that was my summation of it. And I thought forty-three written comments was pretty impressive. But I have the caveat that we've already got fourteen, at least fourteen homes that have been built in the last few years under our current guidelines that would exceed and be grandfathered in under recommendation of four thousand square foot all inclusive. Just for us to consider what is what's been established. Do we have a problem with it and how far can we go?
Even had a couple of others. I think David had said yours forty-six. I don't know if you have any other summary information, David, you want to add? What was Beth Caruso's comment that came this week? Anybody want to summarize that, her note to us? David, do you have that? You have a microphone or something? David?
Beth cautioned us.
Sorry, I was muted. I think it would be fair to say, I think Beth was cautionary in terms of people not understanding what we were proposing. I think I heard pretty consistently, at least in the public comment that we just had there, is that consistency in the eight foot setback on the side yard seems to be where most folks are at. I might disagree, Rick. I read a lot of the comments that said, let's maintain the character of the North End. Let's not build bigger houses. As fact, you know, some of the one that you mentioned that was nine, recommended thirty-five hundred square feet. So, or thirty-five hundred. So, and I, you know, I think that's on the small side. And I think, you know, our compromise of four thousand, I also think if we as a group can come together on, if it's three floors and four thousand and we put it forward to the commissioners, they're going to go through another round of education with the public and public hearing. And they're ultimately going to have some input in terms of what we recommended today here. The public's going to come back to them as well. So.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, David. So with that being said, David summarized it. We've heard Rick's report out. We're looking for a motion. And keep in mind, the motion, as David just stated, gets, you know, second bite at the apple. That means that, you know, we're just a recommendation and that will go commissioners for their consideration. They've got the Remington and Vernick information in the public hearing documents. A couple of commissioners are even with us tonight, or they were. I think they're still here. Kozensky and Persinger are here. And so if we go, if we do end up saying four thousand and that's not the right number, the commissioners are all, all that is, is just a strike to make it forty-two fifty or forty-five hundred. I, you know, I'm with you, Rick, on the forty-five hundred, you know, is maybe teetering on the brink of folks, patients or whatever you want to say as far as square footage. But, you know, we hired that engineer and I'm going to blame it on them. I mean, I'm going to go with four thousand because, you know, that was the high limit of what they recommend. So, and the town commissioners, if they don't like that number, they can change it, you know, to where they see fit. Anyway, waiting for a motion and whatever.
Maybe, yeah, let me summarize very quickly. I think, you know, we have an ability here to push the envelope a little bit in the sense that it goes to commissioners and commissioners can can reevaluate. But I think if we were to push the the setback to eight feet instead of ten feet, I mean, that's a significant push. And if we were to push the limit from the forty-five hundred to four thousand, that's a push in another direction. In other words, it's a balance of ideas, but it's a significant. First of all, it consolidates the eight foot setback through the whole district instead of, instead of having a ten foot. And then secondly, the four thousand really is consistent with a lot of the comments that we're getting about the size of houses too big and it's more consistent with our neighbors in Rehoboth and Bethany and so forth. That's maybe my summary after the, after everything we said in the public hearing we just heard.
Mike, can I ask a process question? Fred, maybe you can weigh in on this. Do we need to go through each of the sections and amend each of the sections individually and suggest an amendment for each of them?
So that depends on the maker of the motion. So if the maker of the motion is anticipating that there might make, excuse me, may be a majority of people who support four of the six changes, then the maker of the motion needs to anticipate that that his motion may not pass. So it's almost, it's a political question, really. You have to decide what the people, what your fellow members can agree to.
That's just, I'll give you guys some guidance if you're looking for some. Just make one motion based on some of the things you've heard and we're going to see if it passes. If it doesn't, no hard feelings. We'll try something else.
I do have one question though about the Remington recommendation. Was it, was it clear from their recommendation that the garages were being counted? Do we know the answer to that?
I don't think so, Fred. They gave a blanket boilerplate definition of what the FAR was included. They didn't do the calculation for, as we're doing it, straight square footage. And they had, Ashley, do you have it there, Dave? I have it.
Yeah, let me, let me find it for you because I do believe they did as a subsequent. Also, when I asked them for some clarification, they came back, I presented the table last time as to what was included and not included in their recommendation. So it said, treat decks and garage uniformly in all three districts, include rooftop decks and garages in the FAR calculation in all three low density residential zones, NRRR and PR, includes porches were to be included, habitable attics, and they go on to define that. Other habitable spaces such as balconies and mezzanines. That was what they called included. They did, I'll tell you what they excluded, just so everybody knows. Ground floor decks, open porches, open porches, whether roofed or unroofed, stairs, ramps and platforms, such uses. Stairs, ramps and platforms such uses which are allowed to encroach in the setbacks, setbacks should be excluded from the calculations. They're clearly not inhabited space. Uninhabited basements should be excluded. And then they go on about open spaces among pilings, which really isn't an issue here.
Let me just add as specify exclusions from gross floor area calculation. It is RVE's recommendation that porches and decks be excluded from gross floor area. The inclusion of a garage in gross floor area will have the effect of making a potential builder consider the garage as it relates to the trade-off of other level space. They're going back and forth on this, but it's their recommendation for us to digest and calculate for the town that we know better than most people.
Oh, it's, you know,
We're not, we're not going to totally agree on anything, but I think it's time after two years that we put this to the next step and let the town council take our thoughts and listen to the public on their end. So I'm in favor of making a motion, not me per se, but of having a motion for our meeting today so that we pass something on to them at this point to see where our efforts have taken us.
All right.
With that, I'd like to make a motion. I think I'll make a motion on all the specific, I'll go by section if that's all right. In section one, I'm going to suggest that we stay with the three-floor recommendation. In section two, I'm going to recommend that we, I would request an eight-foot setback. In section four, I would, I would recommend a 4,000 square foot setback. I would not make any changes to section six or section seven. And section eight, I would accept the amendment as Rick proposed with just the first sentence. Is that clear?
Pretty clear. Look for a second.
Second, that motion.
That was Jimmy O'Connor with a second. Now we can discuss. I have no comments except for I am going to support it.
Okay, I can comment. I would, I support it. I think it has the balance of the eight feet, which is I once called an extreme, but very significant. And the 4,000 square feet, which I would call also very significant. So I think that's a good, a good approach for us.
Are we doing, are we doing the 4,000 square feet, everything under roof?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Above grade and under roof. As written.
As written, the way you wrote it.
On the third floor, are we doing the tiered setback or not?
I would suggest we eliminate the setbacks.
Correct. Anybody?
That was section five, so you're leaving that in.
With clarification for possible ambiguity as written.
Yes, you're right.
But I think, I think the verbiage is correct if it's either the third floor or the whole building.
Well, when I said leave it in, I think section five is striking the tiered setback. That's the motion. Is that we're doing away with the additional setback on the third floor.
Correct.
Okay. I have a problem with the 4,000 square feet and a little problem with the eight.
What? No. Do we have a second?
Jimmy O'Connor had the second already.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Go ahead. My mistake.
No, I just, I want this motion to pass and I want it to go before council. I think it will get a lot more public input and council can decide whether our recommendations are good. For the record, I think 4,000 is a too large a reduction. I think eight foot might be too large a reduction. But I will vote in favor of this motion to allow the public and the council to take it from here.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comments from any other commissioners? All right. Seeing none. I don't see any more. I guess we're ready to vote. So let's do a, let's do a named vote. So I'll just go right on down the list. So so I'm looking for those who vote yes, please. I'll say David Lyons, yes or no?
Yes.
All right. Mark Nordquist, yes or no?
Yes.
Jim Bellicki, yes or no?
Yes.
Rick Judge, yes or no?
Yes.
Jimmy O'Connor, yes or no?
Yes.
Marty Seitz, yes or no?
Yes.
And Mike Harmer, Chair, I think I'm the last one. I don't think I forgot anybody. And I will vote yes also for unanimous vote to recommend this ordinance that Fred Townsend will edit as we've discussed and we'll get that to the town commissioners for their use. Any other comments on that at this point? See none. We'll go around the table now for commissioner comments. I have none to close the meeting and I'll make a motion and amend it to close it. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make before we move forward to close the meeting?
No.
Let me just comment, we look, as a citizen, we look forward to a new town manager and we think that that search is on track. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Marty. Rick?
Just a question, maybe Fred can answer it. Will we be tasked with looking into the 5G utility installation in the future, Fred?
That depends on the actions of the commissioners at their upcoming hearing on whether or not to pursue regulations. So if they, if they decide to, I think it is likely that that the ordinance will be in the form of an amendment to the zoning code, which will require consideration by a planning commission and a recommendation.
All right. I just didn't know that we could schedule something for us now, but if it hasn't come to us, then I guess we can't schedule. Thanks.
Just for.
Thanks, everybody.
Planning and zoning commissioners, based on what Rick just said and Fred just said, we will, I know we're going into holidays, but, you know, we're doing this stuff virtual, so we should be able to schedule something as quickly as possible because every day that goes by could result in a pole right in your front yard, in your view, you don't want. And this is being done extremely quickly. If you look around town, there's already poles installed. So I don't know if we can stop them, what we can do, but if the commissioner send us something, that'll be our top priority. I know we have a laundry list of other stuff that we've blown off to get this ordinance off our plate, this table to us. It's just FYI. Stand by, look for emails and hopefully we can get this virtually done. I know, Rick, you're going to be headed out of the country, but hopefully we can get you an internet connection out there somewhere and involve you on the utility pole thing if they ask us. That's where we're at. Looking for a motion to end. And anybody have anything to say at this point?
Thank you very much, Sean.
Motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn. Second?